All right, well, we're back. Here we are in the, uh, in the Sound of Freedom Studios. We have, uh, a series with three candidates coming up and, um, we're really looking forward to talking to these candidates, um, as part of their campaign to get reelected. How are things been going, Jason?
Terrific. I can't complain one bit, man. I've been riding my way to the election.
Yeah, riding your way over a coyote too, right? You know, what the hell's going on with that dude? Yeah. So, but you're home safe.
Yes, I am.
And you don't have any plans to go anywhere for how long?
Uh, till at least after the election.
All right, perfect. Well, great. So, uh, it's been a long time since we've done a local, uh, podcast or any, any podcast for that, that matter. You can tell maybe the camera will and will not show it, but I've dropped a few pounds thanks to Sean Dittman's health episode. I, I took the time to go see him and man, what a benefit it's been going to talk to him, but I'm doing it all naturally through keto, which is great. Uh, but anyway, let's get on with the election stuff. Yeah, no. Let's not make any jokes about suction, okay? I don't want my wife to hear this, okay? All right, anyway. Here we go. So what we have is an election coming up November 5th. Uh, it's too late to register to vote, so you're late. If you didn't register to vote, shame on you. Uh, the early voting, uh, starts Monday, October 21st and runs through Saturday, October 26th, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And then they're gonna have a, an election day on Sunday, October 27th. So right after church, 12 to 6, you can go vote. And then Monday, October 28th through Friday, November 1st, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. There is no excuse not to vote this year. That's plenty of dates. Election day, of course, is November 5th. You don't like the results, you can storm city hall in November 6th, right? It's, you know, a few months earlier. Uh, it looks like we're gonna be voting this year, uh, for early voting, uh, at the Cibolo Fire Station number two. Of course, there's other locations across the county. If you early vote, then you can, uh, step up and vote, okay? So today I got, uh, we got with us Jeff McGlothlin, a familiar face. How's it going, Jeff?
It's going great.
Good. He, uh, you're running for place one.
Correct.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and, and why you're running?
So Jeff McGlothlin, I've been a Cibolo resident for the last five years. Uh, transferred down here through the Air Force, um, and an intel analyst by trade. And, uh, just recently opened up a small business this year, um, so really excited for that. Um, but the reason why I'm running is, you know, Cibolo is kind of at a position where we have vastly outgrown, um, our town. Uh, there, the, uh, supporting infrastructure is playing, constantly playing catch up and, um, the population is overgrown. Our city staff is shorthanded compared to, uh, the citizens that they're tasked to support. And kind of look, this is a great opportunity to kind of start, uh, steering the city back in the right direction. Um, really wanna aggressively pursue commercial opportunities for the city, increase the revenue to fund the different projects and different resources that we've been short on, you know, and kind of relieve that tax burden from the citizens. Um, and it's very excited to run again. Learned a lot from last year and really I just wanna be an advocate for the citizens of Cibolo, particularly the citizens of Place One.
Whoa, hang on just a second. You said you, you started a business? What's your business, by the way? You know, we have a, you know, a local business show here. I wanna hear what your business is.
So the name of the business is Easy, Easy Clean. Um, started with a friend of mine. I actually met her through a school board meeting. And then she ended up working at, uh, Hot Works out in Shirts. And, uh, when she left Hot Works, she told me she was gonna start cleaning homes and she wanted to expand. And I presented an opportunity to invest with her and so now we have five employees and, uh, it's a residential cleaning business, all natural, pet friendly products and, uh, it's been going well. It's been going great.
Congratulations, man. That's awesome.
Entrepreneurship, man. That's my, uh, that's my jam. Good job.
Yeah, may, maybe we should get you guys in here, but you know, we'll trade you out. You can clean the studio and, and we can, uh,
He's residential only.
Oh, residential only.
He's looking around like, yeah, dude. We would love to expand into the commercial entities.
A true entrepreneur. Yeah, we'll do it. Yeah, when you're starting out, right? Hey, I wa, I want you to build a website for this. Well, we don't do that, but you know what? We're starting out. So we do it. You know how it goes, right? So a lot of lessons, but that's, that's great. I, you know, I, for me personally, and I, I know Jason feels the same, right? We want business owners in government. So that's, that's a, that's a big plus. So, uh, so good luck with your business, you know, endeavors for sure. So, um, um, let's talk some old business real quick. What's the latest, uh, with the zoning over by HEB? I remember when you were in here a year ago, we had some conversations about those houses across the street from HEB. And there was like, they wanna zone them business or not zone them business, whatever happened. And what are your thoughts? Is that a contentious issue as well?
It is. So, um, last year, um, it was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and, um, if I remember correctly, I think it was a four to three vote against. Um, so those residents ended up withdrawing their, um, zoning request to the city, um, knowing that it likely was not gonna pass council. Um, my thoughts on it is where those houses are, three out of the four corners of that intersection are already commercial. And, um, the residents there having to deal with HB across the street, all the ambient light and plus the increased traffic is creating a safety problem. Um, I went and visited with a couple of the residents last year and just kind of got their thoughts on it. And when I tried to leave their house, it took me 20 minutes to back out of their driveway. It, it's just a very unsafe atmosphere. Um, but you know, kind of what I mentioned previously about expanding that commercial enterprise, that is a great location for commercial opportunities. Um, HEB brings a lot of traffic, a lot of business, um, in its own right. And one of the challenges Cibolo's had is we don't have a lot of reason for folks to spend their money in Cibolo and keep those tax dollars in Cibolo. But if we convert those homes over to commercial, there's developers ready to go to start putting businesses up. That's gonna drive more commercial traffic into the area, more tax revenue being spent. And then we'll have more money to fund a lot of the things that Cibolo needs.
Yeah, cuz I remember the, the city put out like a survey of what the business owners wanted to do. And they put together a little committee to try to get that all sorted out, but right now it's settled. You can't, you can't, basically these people can't sell their property right now or get what they want for it if they do sell it.
Correct. They, they can't sell commercially. It would have to still be sold residential until that zoning change goes in. And quite honestly, there's not a lot of folks there that would want to live at that location. Um, it's just, it's unsafe, the noise, the traffic, the ambient light. Um, really the only future I see for that is commercial. I, I look at it as not a matter of if that's rezoned commercial, it's just a matter of when.
Would be nice to go walk to HEB though, I'll be honest, but I don't think that's, that's, you know, but what people in Cibolo really want. So you're definitely in favor of allowing, changing that zoning.
Absolutely.
Okay, crystal clear on that.
You would wanna walk to HEB? What are you gonna do there? Get a freaking sandwich?
I'd get a rotisserie chicken. I cannot eat sandwiches.
Granted, you could walk out with $400 in groceries pretty easily, but I'm just saying, you don't wanna walk your damn groceries to the house.
Dittman's got me on keto, man. No sandwiches for me. I can get a rotisserie chicken though and a salad. Avocado, my hard boiled eggs, you know, that's what, that's what, that's all I eat. That's my, my.
That's light lifting though. I guess that'd be all right.
Yeah, right.
Honestly, what I would love to see down there is a hardware store. Um, like for instance, when I need things, you know, I'm looking at either Lowe's or Home Depot. And so if I'm traveling to Shirts or Live Oak to get those things on my way back, if I need to go to the grocery store, I'm very likely to stop off at the HEB in Shirts, which is, it's great, it's convenient, but then my tax dollars are staying in Shirts. Whereas if I had a reason or an opportunity to go to a hardware store in Cibolo and I need to go to the grocery store, now all my money's staying in Cibolo.
Well, that's great for the city, but you, you know what I've learned about businesses and where they wanna put their businesses? The business owner usually knows what's best, right? And that's, that's a whole nother lesson when you're in government a long time is people that own their property normally know what's best. And it might not always be the best thing for the city, but you know, we do have private property rights, you know, it's a foundation of our country. And that's just where my politics are. But yeah, I'd like to see that get sorted out or at least come up with some sort of compromise. So those people can either be compensated, sell their property or, or something, you know, those, those poor people that live there. So. You also have the neighbors behind those people you have to consider as well, right?
Yes.
And so if it goes commercial, obviously the neighbors behind, they may wanna sell their properties and go commercial too, right? Eventually, you know, it, it can keep growing. So you propose a retaining wall, some sort of, something like that.
Yes, and, um, so like along 1103 where I live, um, outside the retaining wall, they are already developing commercial. There's already a Shell station. Eventually there's gonna be a liquor store. Um, so it essentially would look just like that. So, uh, when I went to planning zoning last year, that was my pitch for these folks is you've already approved these types of developments throughout the city. All we're asking is for you to do the exact same thing right there on Main Street.
So, so you can't walk to HEB, but you can walk to the liquor store. What do you think of that, Jason?
Walking back might be a interesting challenge.
Yeah, yeah, definitely on Saturdays for sample day. I've got a feeling we'll see you over there. Um, 1103 is something maybe we can talk about here a little later, okay? Cuz that's been quite an interesting, uh, interesting story. And Cibolo, it doesn't have a whole lot to do with the city. It's just something, it's a phenomenon that just, um, it's kind of like a, um, god, a tumor, right? You know, you, there's nothing you can do about it, you know, you keep going to the city, they can't really do anything, but we'll talk maybe about that here in a little bit.
Horrible analogy.
Yeah, it's not, probably not the best. Yeah, Jason. I'm so glad you're here, man. It makes it a lot more interesting. Speaking of tumors, what are your thoughts on the tax ratification election, raising property taxes 3.2 cents? When I was, you know, there's been some chatter about it in the community. I haven't been following Cibolo as close as I normally would or, you know, I haven't been as interested in it or whatever, but I heard there's like, man, when people are having a tax hike, you know, that get, that gets out pretty fast. Or at least in election to allow the, the voters the opportunity to, you know, raise the property tax rate. So can you talk a little bit about how your feelings on that and what you think?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the projects that the bonds are looking to fund, I think are needed. Um, you, we got the animal shelter, the public safety center, and then, um, the public safety tax to be able to fund and increase, uh, compensation for our first responders. They're all needed and the, the problem is, um, how do we get to this point, right? I think the city has been slow at looking at some additional opportunities for revenue, uh, to bring to the city to start, jumpstart in these projects versus going back to the taxpayers and asking for more. Uh, one of the frustrating things is, uh, last year we lowered the tax rate. And I, I think when that was pitched to the citizens, a lot of folks like, oh, great, my taxes are lowering. No, actually you're gonna end up spending more because of the tax valuation of homes. So it was a little disingenuous to say, hey, we lowered your tax rate. Well, you had to. And they, we lowered it to the, uh, how am I gonna phrase this? Lowered it to the lowest amount possible before having to go back to the voters to ask for more. Um, so if you celebrate lowering the tax rate, but then put a tax rate on the ballot, it's like, what did we really accomplish here?
Yeah, the maximum tax rate without having to go to an election and basically your, the city's kind of just, and it's, they just get forced to do that. It's kind of a common thing and the state came in and said, well, we're not gonna let you go up this much. So you know, your property's worth a hundred thousand and you know, next year it's worth 120. And so they, they get to collect the tax off their a hundred thousand plus the 20,000 at the, at the one rate. Well, you know, that's gonna increase the bottom line of the city. The city's budget's grown quite a bit, wouldn't you say?
Absolutely. And if you look at neighboring cities, Cibolo actually operates on a very thin budget, um, with similar sized cities in the local area. Um, so yeah, I mean, the funds are absolutely needed. It's just, okay, let's not get to this point again. A couple of years from now, let's start thinking about expanding, especially commercial. Cuz that, that's gonna be the best way to bring revenue to the city that doesn't place that burden on, uh, the residents to where they have to go in and consciously decide, am I gonna vote to increase my own taxes?
Yeah, there's something else too that I, I think is, that, um, I know Mayor Allen talks about. And that's the, um, there's a certain percentage of your city that doesn't pay property tax. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Correct.
How do I get in that group?
I'll become a hundred percent disabled through the VA. Um, so Cibolo has a very large veterans population and a good percentage of those are a hundred percent disabled, which means they don't pay any property taxes. Um, so the state does have a program that if, uh, the city is within a certain proximity to an installation, they will get reimbursed from the state, um, a certain dollar amount to kind of offset that lost revenue. Unfortunately, Cibolo falls outside of that range, so there is no reimbursement. Um, so I know Mayor Allen and a couple of council members at times have gone up to the state to petition. Um, if I'm electing on council, there'd definitely be something I would be doing is continually reaching out to our state representatives to find out, how can we get compensated because, um, just because we're not within proximity to the base or within the legal proximity to which the compensation comes back, we still have those veterans that have chosen to live in Cibolo, which is great. You know, I'm a veteran myself, so, um, I, I love it and, but we can't continually take that burden on just because we're a few miles outside of this range. Yeah, it seems like with the amount of veterans that you have there, there'd be some kind of concession made from the state.
Well, they, they give one to shirts, for example, and, and I, don't quote me, but Mayor Gutierrez told me it's just a few hundred thousand dollars. But Cibolo, it's like 20% of their, um, property taxpayers don't, don't, are disabled veterans or some, some, you know, a higher percentage than normal cities and it's costing your city millions.
It is.
Right? And so the state came in and mandated this, which is a cool mandate. But what happens to the other taxpayers that, you know, somebody has to cover that bill. So the people that do have pay property tax, they're the ones covering it, but the state's getting the credit. You know, it's one of those tricky unfunded mandates from the state. I love it, but you know, it's, it's really the citizens of Cibolo that are paying for it.
Absolutely. I mean, and the bills come due regardless, so that money's gotta come from somewhere. So if you're giving a tax credit to one entity, someone else is gonna have to pick up that slack.
And even if you live next to the base, a property adjoining the base, then they, they don't give you enough money to compensate for all your losses. It's just like a small percentage of your losses. So the state's like, we're gonna do this and we're gonna give the cities right next to the base a little bit of money. So I know Mayor Allen's, uh, one of the things he's been working on definitely, and it's great to hear you're gonna join him because it's, uh, gonna be a priority of the Northeast Partnership too, is to try to get some more funding for the cities around Randolph specifically. Um, or it'd be a statewide thing, obviously, if they do it, but if we can get some relief here, that's gonna help our, our local economy a lot. If, you know, when lower the property tax rates, that helps the commerce side of things, right? And that's how businesses flourish. So, yeah, so you're, 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 uh, when, when you're campaigning, are you hearing a lot of people talking about the 3%, tax hike? Or people asking you about it or what, what are you hearing?
I've, I've had some folks ask me about it. Um, and a lot of it was, hey, I've heard from council that we lowered our tax rate. Why are we going back and we're voting for more? And that's kind of explaining the tax rate versus the actual tax bill. Um, now folks have asked me, is it necessary? And I personally think that those projects need to be funded. Um, I wish it didn't have to be folks voting to increase their own property taxes and footing that bill. I would like to fund that through different opportunities, but unfortunately it is where we are. Um, you know, with how much Cibolo has expanded, we need that public safety center. Um, especially if you look at some of the properties out near Lower Skene or Hackerville, the response times for emergency service cuz it can be 15, 20 minutes and that can be a matter of life and death. Um, so, you know, nobody likes to spend more money and unfortunately we are where we are and, you know, those are things that are needed. If you could change one thing about what the current, um, are you all right with it?
Yeah, just having a drink of water.
Um, uh, the, what, what, what is that called? The current what? The current regime? I don't think regime's the word I'm looking for.
Council?
Yeah, the, um.
Staff.
The current staff, the current council, the current political body in Cibolo. Um, if you could change one thing about what they're doing, what would it be? About the direction that, that they're headed or anything like that. If there's one thing you could change, what would it be? I, I think the, the biggest problem I see on council, especially its relationship with staff, is we need to empower staff to do their job. Um, at times it feels like there's a lot of micromanaging and the way I see council is council sets a vision to the staff of, this is how we wanna see the future of Cibolo for the next five, 10 years, however long. And then it's incumbent on the city manager to take that direction from council and go make it happen. Um, I've, I've sat through plenty of council meetings where I feel like we're dragging on with certain issues and it's a lot of micromanagement. And, um, there's a lot of tension between council and city staff, um, which I don't think is a good look for the city at all. Um, I would like to see a lot of those conversations take place in executive session. There's no reason to air out your dirty laundry to the public. Um, and I think there's a lot of room for improvement. Um, when I've talked to city staff members, I've noticed morale is low. Um, and a lot of that has to do with the tension between staff members and council. I like that. That's, that's, that's entrepreneurship 101. You, you hire employees and a, a lot of, um, uh, I'm getting on a little tangent here. But, uh, one of the, one of the big things that is hard for entrepreneurs is like when you hire an employee, you gotta let the employee do its job. This is a great example of that. You know, the city council, they, they're, you know, they're not really, their employees aren't the city staff, but they are getting paid to do a job. Let them do it, you know?
Yeah, I heard that doesn't happen around here with Chase though. I heard, you know, you ripped them pretty hard for not bringing you coffee this morning or whatever.
And then what happened? He produced coffee. Sometimes, sometimes, see, I didn't micromanage how he set up the studio, but when he didn't have the coffee. You gotta know when, you gotta know when to.
I, I think that I agree with you a hundred percent is, is you gotta, you gotta hire people and trust them to do their job. And then there's a time to evaluate them and that's when you cover the shortcomings, right? And that's happens in executive session. So I didn't know that was going on and that's, that's terrible to hear that, that, you know, people are, you know, getting pushed around or not happy with their job. Job satisfaction's an important part and you don't wanna, you know, you don't wanna get elected just to beat people up on, you know, that work for you. That's, that's not the point. So, um, moving on, another mandate that was almost unfunded. It was $15,000 per school from the state. The state required schools to have school resource officers. Each school has to have a school resource officer and they gave the school districts $15,000 per district to have an officer in their schools. Nobody, nobody's working for, you know, $800 a month or whatever, you know, $1,200 a month. So, uh, that's been kind of a challenge. So there's been a lot of vigorous debate recently in Cibolo. Is that settled? What do you think of the outcome and what, what's up with the SCUC ISD school resource officers and the contract with Cibolo?
So it is settled. Um, I believe that was settled in July. Um, so Cibolo is going to provide nine SROs to SCUC ISD. And, uh, the school district's gonna be compensating the city of Cibolo $1 million. Um, there was a lot of, uh, contention back and forth as to whether or not the city should renew the contract with the school district. A lot of it had to do with the, uh, lack of patrol officers that Cibolo had and, you know, Cibolo wanted to take those SROs and put them back out on patrol. Um, you know, the way I look at the SROs, especially from a taxpayer's perspective, is I pay taxes to the city and I pay taxes to the school district. So either way, I'm gonna be funding that bill. Um, but I want trained sworn law enforcement officers protecting children. Um, had we pulled out of that contract and left that on to the school district to be able to hire and provide and be in compliance with, uh, the new law. Um, no guarantee on what type of caliber of either security officer, retired law enforcement, whatever the case may have been. Um, back in Portland, when I was contracting through Homeland Security, when I got into management, one of my jobs was hiring, you know, physical security officers. And it's not to talk poorly of them, but there is a difference between a security officer and a sworn law enforcement officer, just with the type of training. Uh, one of the big differences I saw when I'd hire, um, folks that were just security officers versus when I'd hire retired law enforcement officers is essentially that verbal judo, that ability to de-escalate situations. And, you know, when we have SROs in school, there can be a lot of tension, you know, especially when kids are in, in those teenage years. You need that presence to be able to de-escalate those situations so they don't get out of control. Um, so the SROs a hundred percent needed to happen cuz you don't wanna push that liability back onto the school district to just be, have to hire whatever's left out there.
Well, kids make bad decisions too, right? That happens, you know, we know that that happens. And so when they do, you don't always wanna have an arrest record cuz then they can't get into college or get military or whatever it is for something silly. And those, you also have to have those SROs, also have to be able to manage that type of stuff a little bit.
Absolutely. Verbal judo, I like that. That's a, that's a, that's a, is that? That's a real thing. There's a, there's a few books about it and you can study it and it's all about. Really? It's, it's all about clever. Not, not just a clever catchphrase. It's, it's an actual technique that a lot of folks teach in that realm. And, uh, it's, it's all about de-escalation and different ways to phrase things and, you know, get people to buy into what you're selling from the law enforcement officer's perspective. I know one, I know one Cibolo officer that could use some shirts or some, uh, verbal judo.
Do you, do you, uh, yeah, cuz that, well, I mean, that's been a big debate in our country, right? With this, the, the two A guys and all that kinda stuff, second amendment and first amendment guys, they, you know, go do the audits. And, you know, a lot of times the officers escalated and he points it out and so, but de-escalation is, you know, I, I shouldn't say a lot of times. Occasionally that's what makes the video, right? If the cop does their job, they don't give them any credit. Going back to the agreement with Cibolo though, I mean, how do you feel? Are you happy with that agreement? Do you think that's, that, you know, you're happy with that, the way that all worked out? Would you, would you change anything?
Um, I'm, I mean, I'm happy the agreement was met. Um, it's something that needed to happen. Um, I think because of where Cibolo was at with, you know, being short patrol officers and looking at, you know, we have that bond to be able to increase the compensation for those officers. I may have looked for a little bit more from the school district, um, at being as a representative for the city. As a taxpayer, again, whichever pot it comes from, I'm, I'm funding the bill. But I, I think the city may have been able to negotiate for a little bit more, but overall I'm, I'm happy that the deal was done.
It's another one where the state could chip in a little bit more money and take the pressure off of, you know, again, it's another mandate. And then the local communities fund it. The cop, the state gets the credit, right? So they're pretty good at that up in Austin, right? So.
Look at all those great things we did. Didn't even cost us a dime.
Exactly, right. We're gonna mandate speed bumps on all, on all residential roads. Yay! But we're not gonna give you any money, a hundred bucks speed bump. Yeah. So, um, going, going back and Jason kinda asked about this, but, uh, more specifically, of course, you know, we had, uh, we, the citizens of Cibolo had Bob Herrera kinda at the helm for a long time. We went to the, uh, the whole toll road thing, you know, all that kinda stuff. We got Wayne Reed in. How's he doing?
I think Wayne's doing a great job, especially when you compare to where the city was a few years ago. Um, I mean, there's always room for improvement, um, but, you know, Wayne inherited problems. Wayne inherited the staff that he had and he, you know, he's been making do with what he had. I've seen, I've only lived in Cibolo for five years, but I've seen a lot of improvement. Um, but me personally as a resident, I get along great with Wayne. When I have questions, he immediately responds to them or he directs me to the right department. Um, and I, I think, you know, when you're a leader, it's knowing what you know, knowing what you don't know and knowing who your experts are, right? So the things I ask Wayne, if he has an answer, he'll answer it. If he doesn't, he knows exactly who has that answer or who can go find that answer for him. Um, so for, as far as a resident, I, I a hundred percent satisfied. Um, you know, looking through the different departments, I, I think there's always gonna be room for improvement. But, um, I have a great relationship with Wayne Reed and I look forward to being, working with him on council.
Did the outlaw mayor of Cibolo hire him? Uh, Stosh?
Oh, I think so. At the end of his term, right?
Yeah, yeah, it was, yeah. Stash brought him in and then, and then the, uh, you know, I don't even know what's going on with the toll road. Last I heard, there was an legal of something was going on. So I, I assume that's gone, but.
I think you're the only one talking about it, dude.
Well, it was the biggest, it was one of the biggest elections in Cibolo's history when Stash decided to run for mayor. He ran for council and lost. He ran for council and lost. And he's like, I'm gonna run for mayor. And it was, you know, then, you know, the whole stand with Stash movement. That was like the sixties over there, man. They were, man, people were. I still see people with the stickers in the back of their car and all that kinda stuff. I don't know who printed all those stickers, but that was quite, quite a movement. I, I think I still have my T-shirt. Now that I dropped some pounds, it might be something I can wear. It might fit. So, but, uh, yeah. So, um, the, uh, let's go on to 1103 real quick. I know there's not a lot of, um, not a lot you can say on that because it's not really a city issue, but obviously it's a, it's the most talked about thing in Cibolo recently. So what in the world happened with 1103?
Yeah, so, uh, the original design that was approved, when they started construction, they immediately realized utility lines hadn't been moved. Um, I know the city and Tech Dot tried working with AT&amp;T, not to throw them under the bus, but I'm gonna throw them under the bus, to move their utility lines and AT&amp;T just didn't do it. Um, so, um, there wasn't much they could do to legally force them to do it. So then they had to go back to the drawing board and drop a new plan to factor in that those utility lines won't be moved. Um, just heard from Mr. Allen, our mayor, that, uh, Tech Dot's supposed to resume the project at the beginning of January. They made clear that not the end of January, as soon as the new year hits, they're gonna be breaking ground again and getting going. Um, and yeah, it's, it's a point of contention. I live right off 1103, so I, I deal with it every day. Um, I'm looking forward to its completion in a few years, at least phase one. And then obviously, once we get done with that, we'll start phase two out to 78.
Well, there's a little story too. People don't know about that. So before I served on the MPO, that was an MPO project, right? Before, well, it was, you know, on the, on the list, right? Tech Dot sponsored it, but it was a no brainer. Like, we're. Textile sponsored it, but it was a no brainer. Like, we're going to do this. I'm like, of course, you know, no brainer, you know? Obviously Joel had some, some impact on it too, Joel Hicks. But what happened was is they, they originally wanted to do 1103, right? And I think it was Andy Dalton, the former mayor of Garden Ridge, right? He got elected 2013, it goes back to. And Jennifer Hartman, Mayor Hartman at the time of Cibolo, got the Northeast Partnership to sign on to this one project and said, no, Selma, you don't want to apply for Lookout Road. No shirts, don't apply for this. We're just going to apply for this one project. Because the NEP was, the Northeast Partnership on, wasn't getting any projects funded in this region. So they said, we're going to go for one. And they kind of got it in a little late. It wasn't super well organized by the mayors at the time. And they came in and said, no, we're not going to fund this project, right? 1103. So the city went a different course and veered towards the toll road. And once they started doing the toll road, they missed several funding cycles. So they weren't able to apply for the money, right? So because they're like, hey, we're going to do it private. So everybody's like, whoa, alright, we're working on something else. In the meantime, shirts got 15, 18 going south. So that tied up several, several years uh, because of the toll road where nobody was going to touch it because it was supposed to be private. Remember they were going to do flyovers, it was going to be divided for land. You remember the toll road, right? Oh yeah, so uh, that's good to hear. So January 1st, uh, Mayor Mark Allen is guaranteed, you will see trucks out working. That's his plan anyway. He's hopeful.
I don't want to say January 1st. I'll say in that first week of January.
Okay, let's hope.
I'll give him a little wiggle room.
So by, by mid February, they'll, they'll, you'll be able to see some action. Alright, well, that's great. Um, I guess that's it unless is there, is there something I didn't cover that you wanted to talk about? Now, obviously, you know, I'm going to let you talk to the voters, whatever you want to say. But is there a hot button subject I didn't cover? I think I got them all, right?
I think so. I mean, those have been the biggest things that have been talked about um, in town. I mean, for, for me, outside of the issues within Cibolo that we addressed, um, I think the biggest point of contention I hear from citizens is folks just don't know what's going on in the city. Um, which I think is a problem. And it's not that the city's not being transparent. I just think the communication is lacking at times. Um, so for me, that's been one of my biggest priorities is connecting and communicating with citizens of Cibolo. Letting them know what's going on with the city, good, bad or indifferent. You know, it's not just about broadcasting all of our successes. Sometimes you have to be just very upfront and transparent with where we're falling short, you know? 1103 is a perfect example, although not a city project. It goes right through the heart of the city and just kind of keeping folks continually updated. But I think the other thing is a lot of folks, um, I don't want to say a lot of folks. There are some folks that just don't understand what city council's role is in a lot of things, like especially when we look at commercial. You know, one thing I hear constantly is, you know, when I talk about expanding commercially, well, I don't want to see more dental offices or nail salons. I a hundred percent get it. It's not to say there's anything wrong with dental offices, nail salons, there's a need there. But you know, the city cannot dictate, this business can go here, this business can go there. You know, all the city can do is approve zoning. And then as long as that business fits the zoning requirements, there's, that's the business that's going to open. But I think where we can improve from a city, especially from a council's perspective, is being a lot more aggressive and courting businesses to come to Cibolo's. You know, one things I would want to do is work with the state's economic development team because they have the manpower and the resources. And start to bring in some of these bigger corporations to set up shop in Cibolo. Uh, you know, one, that's great for revenue, but two, that's great for creating well-paying jobs. You know, with Cibolo, a lot of folks just live in Cibolo, but the majority of folks don't work in Cibolo. So I think at times we miss that sense of community just because Cibolo is where we go home for the night and go to bed. But that's not really where we live. You know, we spend the majority of our days either in San Antonio or Universal City or Converse, you know? So that's one thing I really want to strive for is yes, I want to expand commercially for all the tax revenue benefits, but also, you know, bring jobs, bring more of a sense of community to Cibolo. And you know, communicating that process with the citizens so they understand to the best of our ability to explain it, uh, what's happening. So that confusion's not there, that frustration's not there. Because if you don't understand what's going on with your local government and you hear things, your first reaction is to become frustrated, why is this happening? Well, I want to explain to you why this is happening, good, bad or indifferent.
Yeah, you go to Willie's, remember where we were at Willie's? And a couple of times I ask, you go up to Willie's, uh, right there by Santico's and you ask people, you know, where, where do you live? Converse. Well, you don't live here? No, I can't afford to live here. You know, it's kind of, you know, there, there, where do people work that, you know, live in Cibolo? If they, you know, can't work those type of jobs or where, where, you know, there's, you have a great point. There's nothing there, right? Very little there. I should say there's teaching and, you know, work for the government, some of that kind of stuff. But alright, final thing, anything you want to say to the voters? Why should people vote for you?
So I know that as a council member, I'm a representative of the citizens of place one. I have ideas, I have a vision of things I want to try to accomplish on council. But the thing, the biggest thing is I want to be an advocate for the citizens of Cibolo. I want to help create the future that we want. It's not the future that I want, but the future that we, the citizens of Cibolo want and the vision we see for our city.
Alright, people, make sure you go vote. Jeff McGlothlin, he is running. You can start voting Monday. I forgot the date, so I screwed it up. It's going to be Monday, October 21st. You basically have almost two weeks to vote and then election day is November 5th. Um, and oh, how do people get ahold of you? Are you on social media?
I am.
Okay, you want them to look you up on social media? What's the best way?
So on Facebook, it's uh, Jeff McGlothlin for City of Cibolo Place One. Um, also um, my email, my phone number are on all my social media pages. And then um, different newsletters that come out through Community Impact or the 411 Women's Voter League, um, I have my cell phone number and my email. But if you have any questions, you feel free to email me at jeff.mglothlin1@gmail.com.